Is that why these people are sitting down here? They're waiting for us.
It's really heavy.
Okay, welcome. I'd like to go ahead and call our meeting to order. Today is Monday, August 25th. This is a meeting of the Cedar Rapids Community School District Board of Education. We actually are reconvening. We started our meeting at 5:00 and met in a closed session to discuss the sale of real estate. So, we are now back in session. I'm having some computer problems and I think the superintendent is as well, so we're just gonna work off a paper agenda at the moment and see if we can get things back up and running. So, we'll start with superintendent's report.
Thank you. This evening, I would call your attention to the highlighters that Communication Department, Marcia Hughes and her team put out, and we appreciate the work. Thank you. That was in Sunday's paper. I'm pleased to share that three of our elementary schools have received the K-3 Innovative Grant from the Department of Education. Van Buren and Taylor will receive $70,000 each, and Johnson will receive $69,000. These funds are to be used during the current year to support the needs of at-risk children. Just before tonight's meeting, we celebrated the designation of the district's Educational Leadership and Support Center as an official Blue Zones work site. This means we are now developing and will maintain a work environment that promotes and encourages well-being of everyone who works here. Cedar Rapids Mayor Ron Corbett and representatives of the Blue Zones Group joined us in our Blue Zones is part of the Iowa Healthy Estate Initiative, which aims to make Iowa the healthiest state by 2016. The district's committed to do our part. I want to remind everybody that the physical plant and equipment levy vote is scheduled for Tuesday, September 9th. Pebble funds are used for school buildings and campus maintenance and transportation needs. The district is asking for the approval of a 10-year Pebble at $1.34 per 1,000 of assessed valuation. We have had the Pebble for 40 years, and the current authorization expires next June. For more information on the vote, as well as a list of Pebble projects for each school, you can visit our website. Finally, it's time to get very excited. Tomorrow morning, all district students will return to classroom Thursday, the 26th, for the 14-15 school year. Taylor, of course, on the modified calendar is already underway. I know teachers and staff are very excited to welcome everybody back for a great school year. There's many exciting things happening in our schools as we work together with our community to provide rigorous, relevant instruction to all students. It's great to be starting another year.
Yes, it is. Thank you for your report. Any board reports at this time or comments? I hope you notice when you walk in, the student artwork section, we've kinda highlighted that with the title. You're gonna start to see more framed artwork throughout, and they'll be coming to the front of this building. So, thank you, Laurel, for helping to assist in getting that done. It really adds to the atmosphere, and we very much appreciate it. John?
I just wanted to comment on the Pebble. I'm glad Dr. Benson mentioned that. I think as a board member, I've brought up several times that the Pebble so far has been able to keep us at a point where we've kept up with emergencies and things that are really, you know, critical needs in our buildings. But, we need to get ahead of the curve right now. Deferred maintenance lists that I've seen are growing every year, and with children in the school buildings, I would like us to have the best schools possible for our kids and our staff in the coming years. And this is the tax, the way that we're gonna be able to do that, and be on par with other districts around ours. So, I encourage everybody to vote and support the Pebble.
Thank you. We do, too. I also want to thank everyone in the building for the Blue Zone Workplace Designation. It comes with a long list of requirements that everybody here had to comply with, I'll say. But, we also have, we're working with Virgin Pulse with pedometers and hoping to create a healthy atmosphere for our workforce. So, thank you for doing that, Rhoda. We appreciate that. Next is Communications, Delegations, and Petitions. I do have three requests to address the board. We'll start with Lawrence Wenkowsky. And for those of you who are new to our boardroom with comments, we ask you to keep them to five minutes. Laurel will signal you when your five minutes is up. Please state your name and address for the record. And this is not a place to dialogue with the board. It's merely to share your opinions and concerns or highlights. So, thank you, Lawrence.
Lawrence Wenkowsky, 4234 Morel Road, Northeast. Over the past few months, even tonight, agenda items and that have been, that affect the Pebble vote were pointed out, and, you know, the votes pointed out here. But, now that the Pebble vote is two weeks away, I'd like to know what the plan is being in order to pass this referendum. By now, I expected signs in front of schools notifying the community about the vote, to see signs throughout the community supporting the Pebble. I have seen none of these. Is the goal to sell the vote to the community, or is it to keep it under the radar in order to pass it? If you believe in the Pebble, it should be sold to the community. I personally don't believe in trying to pass it under the radar. A few weeks ago, a friend contacted me about getting sidewalks down Usher's Ferry. Cause their child goes to Gibson, and there's some history there, which is not important. And you're all aware that Edgewood is a nightmare now, over close to Blair's Ferry at 100. And what is going on with that is also they plan on putting a bridge over Usher's Ferry. Well, up until last week, Usher's Ferry was totally closed, and the DOT went through, and they ripped out part of Usher's Ferry, and now they've replaced it with a temporary road, which is gonna stay there until the bridge is installed. And this temporary road is narrower than Usher's Ferry was before, and there's room for two vehicles to go by, but there's no room for people to walk safely or to ride There's also some question as to whether the city is gonna put in sidewalks down there or not. But, you know, all the families who live south of Blair's Ferry and use Usher's Ferry to get to Viola Gibson, this year are presented with an extremely hazardous condition, as the road is barely safe for vehicle traffic. Until Edgewood is complete, Usher's Ferry will also be used for cut-through traffic, increasing the danger on Usher's Ferry. Per Procedure 901A, which allows for the review of transportation, I believe it's with the Deputy Superintendent and a few other people, I believe this situation should be reviewed and with the intent of providing free transportation for all the people or families who go to Viola Gibson and use Usher's Ferry. And this should be reviewed yearly until the construction is complete, and it's safe for people to walk on it in order to get there. The other thing is with all of people, you know, these families can't participate in a walking school bus or even ride a bike to school, now or even afterwards. And the way the bus fees are set up, it's sort of like, if you live on the wrong side of Blair's Ferry, and you want your child to take a bus, it's gonna cost you something like $550. Cause you're gonna be, most of the people are under that two-mile mark, or mile, I forget which one it is. But, we need to reevaluate those fees. It's not fair to charge somebody $550 to bus their child less than a mile because they live on the wrong side of a major highway. And that's just not right. If you gotta charge them something, that's one thing, but it's not like they have a major choice in where we put the school and that. So, if someone could, A, get back to me on the Pebble thing as to what your, the goal is in trying to pass it, and also get back to me on this, as to whether you just wanna have this meeting and that, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, next is Scott Hughes.
My address is 2326 Townhouse Road, Northeast, and I'm here to speak in support of the physical plant and equipment levy, which is up for reauthorization through the school board meeting next, or school board election next week. Let me start by saying, my two children are grown. They are adults. They're out of college in the grad school. So, I don't have kids in the school district at the moment, or do I expect to in the future? Now, there are people in my situation who would say, why should I be concerned about what the school board is doing or what the schools are doing? I've paid my share of taxes. My kids aren't in it anymore. I'm smart enough to realize that the schoolchildren and the students of today are going to be the architects and designers and construction workers of tomorrow, the engineers and the road builders of tomorrow, the teachers of tomorrow, the healthcare workers, doctors and nurses of tomorrow, and the elected officials and leaders of tomorrow. I hope to still be around tomorrow, so those schoolchildren of today are gonna have a big impact on my life in the future. And it's important for me and everyone in the community to support the educational system, excuse me, the school district, and the efforts they make to make sure we have a quality education for our children. Specifically for the physical plant and equipment levy. This goes directly to the buildings, the walls, the roofs, the doors, the windows of the buildings that are used in the district. There's over 400 acres of grounds the district is responsible for, and close to 3 million square feet of buildings that need to be cared for. As taxpayers and residents of the school district, it is our responsibility to make sure that those physical plant items are kept in good repair. And the physical plant and equipment levy is an ideal way to take care of that. It's true that you're asking for an increase in the amount of the levy, but that comes out to about a 4% increase in the tax rate. And as Dr. Benson mentioned earlier, that amount has not been increased in 40 years. And I challenge you to find any other expense that is gonna go up 4% in 40 years. I still think that that is a good bargain and an important part of the school's responsibility, and we as taxpayers and residents of this school district, our responsibility as well. Just as a homeowner is responsible for the upkeep of their house, their roofs, their doors, their windows, their walls, so are we as residents and taxpayers and stakeholders in this community, responsible to take care of that for our schoolchildren, our teachers, our educators, and our schools as a whole. And I hope that everyone listening today will support it as much as I do, and I look forward to this issue passing next week. Thank you.
Next is Scott Drzieski.
Dr. Benson, Scott Drzieski, 6917 Torazo Drive Northwest, here in Cedar Rapids. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of RISE, which stands for Renovating and Improving the Student Environment. We're a group of parents with students in the Cedar Rapids School District who are working to pass the Pebble vote, the physical plant and equipment levy, by educating our fellow parents in the district. While I'm personally not a big government tax increase sort of guy, this Pebble thing makes sense to me, and I'd like to explain to you why it does. You see, I last walked the halls of Cleveland Elementary School as a student 28 years ago. I finished at Roosevelt Middle School 26 years ago, and I walked across the stage with my fellow Jefferson High School grads 22 years ago. However, I'm sure you can't tell that it was that long ago. Tomorrow, students will be walking into the same classrooms that I attended when I was a student. In fact, I believe that every school that was in use when I graduated from high school is still in use in some sort today. I did the math, and the schools average about 60 years old. Two of them are topping 100 years this school year. And now, schools are built to last 100 years or more if they're well-maintained, and that's the key in my mind. Anyone who owns an older house knows the cost to maintain and repair older buildings does go up each year. They also know that's a necessary expense, cause if you don't spend it this year, you'll spend a lot more to make the same repair the next year, and even more the year after that. So, the need to renew Pebble, as well as the need to support the first increase in 40 years, makes fiscal sense to me. Pebble isn't a blank check. In fact, right now, you can go on the school website or visit any of the schools and see a list of the projects that will be done with the money raised through Pebble. So, voters today can find out where their money will go before they have to cast their ballot. The projects will make sure our schools are safe, compliant with code, and accessible for students, teachers, staff, and parents. We're talking about asphalt playgrounds and roof repairs, fire alarm replacements, some new carpeting or tile, energy-efficient lighting, handicap accessible bathroom stalls. It's not fancy, it's not extravagant, it's at the core of keeping our neighborhood school buildings habitable. Assuring that we have facilities that keep our students safe, enhance the learning environment, and make our community proud of the education we're offering here. Is funding Pebble fiscally responsible? I bet it, I believe it is. Here's a question that helped me come to my conclusion. Do we put a few extra dollars in each month to maintain the schools we have and improve their efficiency, or do we fund nothing until we must undertake a mass replacement of our neglected neighborhood schools at a much higher taxpayer expense? If you're looking for the best deal with the least impact on your pocketbook, voting yes September 9th is the wise option. Tonight in our house, we're gonna have a wide range of emotions. First of all, I have a 4th grader who's restlessly counting down the time by the second until the last sands of summer vacation have officially slipped through the hourglass. Just feet away in another bedroom is my new kindergartner, who's been dreaming of going to school with her older brother for months, if not years, and she knows that tomorrow she gets to decide what she's having for lunch. Tomorrow, my kids are gonna walk through the doors of Coolidge School into a lifetime of learning and memories that are just beginning. As you can imagine, I have some emotions going on inside me, too, and they're mixed. But, I can tell you, I feel so good knowing that I'm sending my kids to a Cedar Rapids school just blocks away from my home, and I want to be sure that our schools remain great as my kids grow up. I can't find a reason why a small increase, one that's no more expensive than maybe a lunch or two at the grocery store deli, no more costly than a couple weeks of the newspaper, and probably about the same cost as that drive-through, double-shot, grande fancy coffee. I have no idea why we would take an increase so small and cast it away. It's so worth it. It ensures that our schools are safe, solid, and inviting for our students, and it also saves taxpayers in the long term. So, thank you for your time, and please, I ask everyone to ask your friends to vote this week or next via absentee ballot or at the Lynn County Auditor's Office, or on September 9th at one of the local high schools. To those like me who are tempted at first blush to vote against the request for more revenue, please do what I did and take another look. Visit risecr.org, which is our parent group website, that's risecr.org, or the school district's Pebble page on their website. This is a cost-effective, solid investment opportunity that we should not pass up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Second, please.
Second.
Discussion on any items? Keith?
I have a question that earlier in the year, I understood why I said, but we're getting a lot of TBDBs on the salary, and early in the year where we didn't know the salaries, I understand that, but why is that continuing? To be determined, so the audience knows what that means.
Yeah, it means to be determined, because we have a salary structure that relies on verification of previous years of teaching experience and also transcripts from colleges to verify their educational attainment. And so, that takes a while for those to come in, and then when they do have all of those official documents in, then we're able to officially set their salary. We could probably, if we did it another way, we would probably just put it at the beginning salary level and then to be determined based on further information. We could do that, but right now, like if someone doesn't have all of their information and they're gonna get, like, the very basic salary, because we don't have that verified yet.
Could it come back at a later meeting, too?
It certainly could, to show what they are.
We can prove it, but still.
Yeah, we could do it perhaps in a similar way that we do level changes to show where those salaries landed, and that we're probably about a week or two away from making sure that we have all of that information documented.
Good point. Any other items? Gary?
I'd like to pull BA 15261.
Okay. So, do you have specific questions, or would you like Rhoda and Paul to just kind of summarize what is being proposed?
I'd like a summary, and I just think it's, I think it's an important enough subject that I'd like to just see in independent and not just put it through on the consent agenda.
Okay, why don't we hear a summary, and then you can decide after that?
Okay.
Or you can go to the podium if you like.
Remember how to turn this on. Am I on? Go ahead.
I would just like to say, I have the same concern, and I think in the summary, I'd like to understand since mental health is such a key concern within our schools, and we hear it all the time when we're in the buildings. After the flood in particular, we really emphasized on this. So, is this going to detract from our mental health services for students, or does this somehow enhance or keep it on the same playing field? How will they get similar services? So, I think that's the concern.
I have some questions, but I think, to be fair, listen to the summary and then.
Okay.
Okay. I think what we're proposing is that we shift our services delivery model. So, for the last 15 years with Metro Care Connection, we have had an agreement with Abbey Community Mental Health Center to provide school-based therapy. It's been individual therapy for students that need that at school. And we, this year, are proposing, because Abbey Center was fortunate enough for us to get a grant from United Way, that we will shift to a consultation model, where we'll be using mental health specialists that will consult with our building staff, with our learning supports teams, with our students, with our families, to help determine what the needs are. They'll also provide assessments for individual children, and they'll engage our families and engage our community, mental health providers, in developing plans for students and determining what services they really could best benefit from, and then helping them to access those services. So, it may be therapy, it may be other types of mental health services that the mental health specialists will help facilitate access to.
How is that different than our previous service?
Before, we've been pretty limited to just providing those mental health therapy sessions with individual students that are identified by building staff, maybe by, maybe by families or parents, maybe by students themselves. And we've served around between 300 and 400 students a year. Now, we're looking at providing really a more comprehensive look, engaging, you know, other service providers at times, because the provider that actually provides the therapy, if that's what's deemed necessary for an individual child, will be the family's choice. It always really has been the family's choice, but, you know, in this case, we won't even have, you know, the opportunity to provide the therapy at school most of the time. There might be some situations where the teams decide and the families decide that school's the only place, you know, that the child can access the therapy, and so, we'll make arrangements for it to happen there. But, we think we're gonna be able to engage more staff, educate our staff by having, in these seven schools that are funded by the grants that we have received and that Abbey Center has received, having those mental health therapists, or I should say specialists, we're calling them now, on-site will really help build the capacity of our schools to identify the needs that are out there, and, you know, help us all learn about how to address those together.
So, this change was precipitated because of a grant that United Way provided to the Abbey Center?
Yes.
Right, and I would add, that's consistent with United Way's educational initiatives. We're, and I say we're, I'm on the board at United Way, trying to take a holistic approach rather than treat a symptom. We're trying to set up structures that treat students in a holistic environment, cause they don't just exist in the school environment, they exist in a total family and community environment. And these adaptations are trying to get at that holistic approach. You could think about it as a wraparound service rather than a symptomatic service.
Okay. So, John?
So, is the service going to be at the same level or even higher level in terms of the therapies available for these students, even though it may not be in the schools? And who's paying for that? I mean, what's, the private services, insurance, the government, who's paying now if we're not offering that in the school district? That's a question that's been asked of me, and that's why I'm asking it.
Yeah. Who pays for the individual therapy will depend on the students' resources, for the most part. It'll be families that are paying for the therapy if that is required through their Medicaid or their private health insurance.
Is that who paid for it before, or is that a new model?
Well, it's really changed over time. When we started Metro Care Connection 15 years ago, we tried to provide therapy to any student that needed it. If they didn't have other access, if they didn't have health insurance, or they didn't have, or they had a high deductible and the family couldn't afford it, or even if parents couldn't get off work to, you know, come and take their child to school, we offered it here. But, over time, really, healthcare delivery has shifted, and healthcare reimbursement has shifted, and Abbey Center really found, too, that they had to only provide those services that they could bill for. And in the last two or three years, we've only been able to serve students that have a source of income to support billing for those services. So, really has changed, the model really has changed over time. And the district, you know, has not been able to provide or hasn't provided direct billing or direct, yeah, payment for those services for some time. Our resources have gone to allow those therapists to work out of our schools. There's a lot of non-billable time that happens during the school day, because they're driving back and forth from school to school, or they might visit a school where they're supposed to have an appointment with a child, and maybe the child's absent that day, or, you know, for some other reason, they can't then meet with that child, so that, you know, they are not able to seek reimbursement for their time then in that way. So, our district dollars have really gone just to support their being here, being able to work here out of school. So, I don't know, our hopes for this are that we'll be able to find more students earlier that have mental health needs or behavioral needs. and use our teams and, you know, the mental health specialist expertise in helping us identify what will best serve those students. And then really working too to engage our families and to find not only those students that need therapy, you know, but those students and families that need other sorts of related mental health supports as well. So, and I think that's where, you know, Four Oaks and some of the other community agencies that will be involved come in.
Okay.
So it's going to be more of a collaborative approach. We hope to be working better probably with community agencies as well.
Okay, John?
I'm sorry, I just have one more question on this. So if, if these students are not getting services in our schools, that means they have to leave school so they will be pulled out of school more often? Is that true or not true?
Well, if, if a student needs mental health therapy and the family decides that they are going to help that happen and they choose, you know, an agency to provide that, we're going to be encouraging that to happen outside the school day as much as possible just to preserve, you know, the amount of time that students have in the classroom to advance their learning. But there will be situations where the best case scenario for a student and a family is to provide that at school. And so, you know, the team and the family together will make that decision. So there will be times when, when therapy happens at school, but that's not going to be our primary objective.
Gary?
Several things. First of all, it's my understanding that we're in this situation primarily because the Abbey Center had reduction in their, in their funding, not necessarily this year, but in private, in previous years, that we moved, we're being supported by United Way, right? That will make this a workable situation. But I guess what I'm getting at is that this isn't necessarily the best way. We're making, we're trying to do the best in a bad situation. And it was because of initially of loss of state funding to Abbey Center that's really brought us down this road.
I don't think that's the case really. We, you know, Abbey Center has had some changes, of course, in how they deliver services too. But our source, our district source of funding for many years was, came from our health services budget. Years ago, Health Services was able to carry out Medicaid administrative claiming. The state no longer allows us to do that, but we did that for a number of years and the state said that that reimbursement from the Medicaid administrative claiming could come back into our health services programs. And we made the decision as a district to allow Metro Care Connection to kind of pool those monies and just carry them over from year to year. And we added to those monies by writing other grants and we used to do Family Day at the ballpark and we had, you know, all kinds of fundraising ways that we went about trying to provide school-based healthcare services for our kids. Last year, Abbey Center knew, as did all of us, that our, that fund would be depleted. And we really didn't have another source as a district that we could identify to fund those services. So I think that is what gave Abbey Center the impetus to go out and, you know, search for another supporter or funder of those services and they had an opportunity to write this grant to United Way and they seized that opportunity. We, I guess over time, the last few years, we have been looking at wanting to provide more of those consultation services because that really is what our staffs seem to need and want was, you know, some mental health expertise to help them in planning for kids and just to educate them. So, but, and we were able to provide those early on when the district was, just had a pot of money, you know, to support Abbey's presence in the schools. But in recent years, when Abbey had to move toward just providing billable services, they had to limit their services really just to the direct therapy for kids. And they weren't able to provide the consultation time to the teams anymore or participate or do anything after school or do home visits or, you know, anything that engaged the families because they were just limited to providing that direct service, that direct billable service to kids. And so, you know, we missed that, being able to provide that. And I think that is part of what we want is to just bring that expertise to the teams, have a mental health specialist onsite as much as possible that can work with the teams and the families and just be considered another member of the staff.
So this, this agreement will allow for assistance with seven schools, correct?
Yes, basically.
What happens with the needs of the other schools that are not part of the grant?
Well, as the agreement indicates, there, we do have some remaining dollars in our health services fund that will provide for consultation hours. About seven hours a week, which isn't a huge amount. But we're going to have one of the Abbey mental health specialists be available to all the other schools in the, in the capacity of consultant like what we'll be providing at the seven schools. And, you know, we'll just see what the need is going forward. But that person will kind of be dispatched as we envision it. Dispatched for Metro Care Connection to the, to the teams that request that service.
This is, this is a three-year grant, correct? Renewable every year for three years. We're embedding some, some, some good services within this, this grant. My concern is always what happens at the end and the fact that we have many other schools. So my question is, do we need to look at long-term adequate funding to be able to support this program and expand it to cover, make sure that we can adequately serve all students in the district?
I believe we do, yes. And, you know, we'll learn as we go. We are grateful that we have this opportunity to test, if you will, another model and to do it with community partners. The Department of Human Services, Juvenile Court Services are very interested in supporting and watching what's happening. And United Way, of course, is vested in this, this beginning, so.
Nancy, I know you had a question.
Yeah, I had, when you talked about if students are, they have referrals. It's the responsibility of their parents to cover those costs? Or did I get that wrong?
Well, I'm not sure how I articulated it, but if a student requires therapy services outside of school, yes, the families would provide for those mental health services just like they would other kinds of healthcare services that they seek.
What would happen though to parents that may not have the insurance? And what happens to those children?
Yeah, I, I think that we are going to be working with other community partners as well to help, you know, find access for families and bring resources to bear. So there are other community entities that will be involved in this, you know. Maybe not necessarily providing therapy, but providing other sorts of supports that are related to those mental health needs to serve those kids, so.
Okay, John, did you have a?
I was just going to say, I'm grateful for what Abbey's doing and what United Way is doing. There's obviously a huge need here and we're not meeting the full need of the kids in the schools. And so, I mean, I'll put this on my board for future discussions. I think it's, it's a huge need and it's something that we need to look at closer with the administration's help, so.
I think it's a need across the state. And Dave, I know we, in the last legislative session, talked about some kind of arrangement through the AEA's and what, do you have any thoughts on, on the future of that?
Right. I know that our AEA has expressed interest in becoming a, a mental health pilot and providing services on a fee-for-service basis that we could pool and therefore we would get more services at a, at a better rate. And I know that Executive Director Crozier is pursuing that.
So more to come. And it's something that a lot of school districts are paying attention to across the state and one, a topic we're concerned about and will continue to discuss. So thank you for the added summary and details. Gary?
Yeah, I, I would not vote against the proposal. My intent was that we, that we have a thorough discussion, I think. And the importance that this isn't the best, but we appreciate, I appreciate, we appreciate, but United Way is what we're doing. It's not the, the best solution, but we're making do with what we can and I think pointed out. I think as we, as school board, as we start developing legislative priorities, and I know we're, we're approaching that, although it seems like we just finished the legislative session, that we start, that we look at building that as one of the priorities in the School Board Association and our own board. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. This is a roll call action due to the personnel report.
Sorry, I had one other question. There was just a typo on the section on the beverage coolers. The, the low price, they were just switched. And so I just wanted to make, at least that's what it appeared to me, that section BA 15-259. And I just wanted to point out that we are awarding it to the low bidder even though the prices got flipped. Sorry, I didn't have a chance to bring that up earlier, so.
No, that's a good catch. That's okay, I'm looking at Susie. She's here this evening to address any questions on that, so.
Typo?
Yeah.
So I just wanted to point out that it's a typo and we are awarding it to the low bidder even though that's not what, at first glance, it appears, so. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
All right, back to you, Mary.
Okay, roll call action? Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Wood?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Laberty?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
President Meisterlein? Aye. Next I'm going to turn it over to Laurel Day for a discussion on board governance.
Thank you. Tonight we're bringing a variety of different documents for you to review. An update on Procedure 301, 300.1A on the leadership team. Policy 504 on evaluation. Regulation 701.1 on tuition and Regulation 701.2 on the sale or distribution, disposition of property. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to visit with you.
Questions or comments? John?
So one, one question and I'm, I'm sure I have an answer that it's in law, but Policy 504 on evaluation. So we evaluate on a three-year cycle, but yet as, as a board, I know that there's all kinds of daily and sort of monthly and ongoing evaluation and yet in our policy, we only talk about this formal, once every three-year thing that's under the Iowa code. I'm pretty sure that's where that's coming from. Is there anything that we can do to, I mean, the public is looking at our policies as the guiding principles, but yet we're talking about the bare minimum under Iowa code and we're doing so much more. Is there anything that we can do to show the public under policy that we're actually doing a lot more than that for our staff and teachers?
Yes, I think, I think so. I think the answer to your question is yes. Perhaps we did not include some of the information about the formative assessments and the formative evaluations that go on every day, that go on every year. The focus of our evaluation system in the school district, of course, is to improve the performance. And so as we look at those folks that are evaluated by their supervisor, you know, everything that we are doing can be evaluated by a supervisor. And so we have a lot of ongoing assessment and ongoing, kind of talking almost like the classroom, ongoing evaluation that does take place. I think what's not clear there, and we may need to wordsmith it a bit, is the fact that each year we, we set our, we have an individual professional development plan or we call it an IPDP. So we have annual goals that we identify as administrators and as teachers and even with our peer professionals and our supervisory staff, everyone is setting goals that they hope to achieve on an annual basis. And with the teachers specifically, that has kind of morphed into the legislation about peer review process that came out last after the 13th legislative session. So that peer review process has become part of the IPDP or the Individualized Professional Development Plan. Teachers are working collaboratively with other teachers to develop goals, to monitor those goals, to reflect on their practice and so forth. So while it might not be clear in the, is that a regulation or a policy? While it might not be clear in the policy that all of those things are happening, perhaps we could add something. I don't know if we'd want to put this, the summative evaluation is what's done every three years and that's based on the standards for school leaders, for the administration. It's based on the standards for teachers in the state of Iowa for the teachers. And so in the meantime, you know, our administrators are doing walkthroughs in classrooms. They're doing quick visits. They are sitting in on PLC meetings. So there's just ongoing evaluation that is occurring on a daily basis. And if we had a situation where we were concerned about a teacher's performance or one of our performance, there is a intervention process that the district has in place to address those needs for all of our work groups if there's a concern. And I don't know if Jill could maybe refer to that.
And one of the things I might suggest is when we, when we took a look at this in Policy Committee, the evaluation process had not been updated in a little while. And so this was an effort to solidify that process and kind of what's happening. We didn't go into that level of detail, but what we might be able to do is add a board policy, a regulation that further explains how other informal evaluation is conducted. We even added in the evaluation policy that it's not just for improvement, but to recognize performance was added to that as well. And we were really focusing in our executive council on informal recognition as well as a way of improving performance. So a lot, we could maybe include something like that, take that back to Policy Committee and expand on that in a regulation.
Let's add a regulation. Okay, other comments? Keith?
This is on the tuition section, is that okay? The foreign exchange status, is that a new, totally new policy we have there?
Yes.
And, I mean, I guess we have to do it according to what it says, but are we notifying the organizations that are sponsoring students that this will be a new policy?
Once this policy goes into, into play, we will. For the organizations that are already bringing students, we will not apply it ex post facto to those students. But going forward, yes.
Okay, so that will start tomorrow if we do it?
It would.
Tonight we're just reviewing.
But the regulation does not require approval, so it would be effective tomorrow.
For any new student, any student that's in the pipeline and has been approved and here, we will not. As I view that as an ex post facto application of a, of a regulation. But going forward, yes.
Is this, is this a change from the State Department of? Have we never been able to claim them as a, we never got, they were never part of our student, total student enrollment? We never got state aid?
That's right.
Okay.
And we won't.
We won't.
No.
We'll get tuition.
Right. Right. Okay, other comments? Okay, thank you. As always, we appreciate the work of this committee. I know that you spend hours on crafting and drafting these, so we really appreciate that work. Now, we're going to move into a work session away from our formal meeting, and I'll turn this over to Mary Ellen and Becky to talk about PLC implementation and survey data. You've got a PowerPoint at your desk as well.
President Meisterling, Dr. Benson, members of the board, it's my pleasure tonight to share information with you about our PLC journey that we embarked on about seven years ago in this district, and to give you a little bit of an update on how things are going with the implementation, and we are, and how we're moving along. Becky Martin will be joining me. Becky is our professional development facilitator and has worked on administering the PLC survey for the last several years. First of all, I think I'm going to be able to switch this. There we go. First of all, I wanted to start out and identify the fact that implementation of professional learning communities is one of our broad district goals. And I want to thank the board for allowing us, for the past six years, to maintain those three broad goals of implementation of professional learning communities, quality of instruction, and closing the achievement gap. If we look at those broad areas of implementation, it has really helped us to have the latitude to continue our focus on those areas within that umbrella with those three goals. And we think of professional learning communities as the vehicle, or as the means of carrying out the other goals of quality instruction and closing that achievement gap. Because if indeed our professional learning communities are working well, and they are focused on those three broad areas and the four questions, then indeed we'll see the narrowing of the achievement gap, and we will see quality instruction in our classrooms. Some of the ways, sometimes we like to identify it and talk about how everything fits together by using these puzzle pieces. And so, we see the other two goals, closing the achievement gap, quality of instruction. And we also have other things that are, may be a federal or state mandate that we're working on, whether it be SINA implementation and the sanctions that go along with SINA, whether it's the implementation of the Iowa Core, whether it is our C Plan that we submit with the AYP and APR information each year, as well as our school improvement plan, or what we're very excited about is the teacher leadership that is brought down to us from the state as well. So, as we connect all of those initiatives as well, we also have some things that are going on in our district. The early literacy legislation, we know that we are going to be looking at, looking straight at that in the year 2017, so we're doing a great deal of preparation and work at the elementary level for that early literacy legislation. Also, the mental health support, we just had a broad conversation about that, and looking at how we can best serve our district in that area. Middle school changes this year with the additional literacy block and the common enrichment and time for interventions. And then also, as we look at changing from semesters to trimesters. The thing that really holds all of that work together is the processes and the procedures that we use with professional learning communities. The three broad areas are a focus on student learning and a focus on adult learning as well. We know that that's every bit as important as the student learning. If we have our teachers learning at high levels, the quality of instruction will improve, and thus, our student achievement will improve. So, the second point is the use of data and the use of results. And so, in our professional learning communities, we always talk about the fact, are we really collaborating, or are we co-laborating? Because if we're not focused on student data, and if we're not focused on, if I look at these results that I have for my students, and then I am not identifying the laser-like focus that they need for their learning and the learning style that they need, and I'm not changing my teaching or modifying my teaching for that, then we aren't going to see the results that we would hope to see. And that last thing is the collaboration. And we have wonderful structures in place for PLC collaboration, teams that are working very hard to continue to implement. The PLC process, or this diagram, I guess I would call it, is our PLC process. And you've seen it before with circles. At our high school level, they kind of like this linear template, rather than the circles that we've used in the past. We, but whenever we're working in our PLCs here in the district, they're focused on those four broad questions. The first one, what is it we want all students to know, learn, and be able to do? And so, during that professional learning community time, they may be engaged in identifying the essential priority standards. They may be talking about what it is that they're going to really focus on for kids. And they're also looking at, well, what are the skills a student would need to get to that proficiency level, and what is, what does proficiency look like? Also, question two, then, is how are we going to know if they've achieved those results? And at that time, in those professional learning communities, they are developing their formative assessments, and that's an ongoing assessment, not the end of the chapter summative assessments. They are talking about how they're going to deliver instruction. They're saying, how did you teach this? How did I, you know, maybe there's a better way to teach this. My kids didn't seem to get that. They're having conversations around instruction, and they're having conversations around, oopsie, there is another part of this. There we go. The last two questions, then, what are we going to do when students struggle or don't learn, and how are we going to, what are we going to do if they've already learned it? And that's that multi-tiered system of support that we have in place that used to be called Response to Intervention, was just recently changed at the state level. So, we have pyramids of support in our schools to, it may be during an intervention or an enrichment block of time in the schools, or it may be right in the classroom as far as differentiating the instruction to meet the needs of all learners. So, that's just kind of the big, big picture of what professional learning communities look like in our district. And Becky's going to take over now and talk a little bit about what we're learning from teachers. Before she does so, though, sorry, Becky, I forgot I wanted to say something else. Before she does so, I wanted to mention that the information that Becky and I, Becky's going to share about the PLC implementation comes from our survey, but we are getting to the point with some of our survey questions where we're at 90%, 98% implementation, and that's good. That's what we're hoping for after this many years. So, what we're going to focus on is kind of what information we gleaned from the survey to tell us what our next steps are. There you go, Becky. I'm done.
Thanks. All right. Good evening. Thanks, Mary Ellen, for sharing the big picture. We wanted to set the stage for how do we use the results from the survey, rather than just talk about the survey in isolation. What do we do with it? And we ask the same questions that we ask of kids, of our staff. How do we know that the staff is progressing and using the questions as we want, as we expect them to? So, this first survey question that I have on this screen is one of the big PLC ideas. Focus on learning for students. And the question is, do you use the four critical PLC questions daily in your classroom work? And this is trend data. You can see 12, 13, and 14. That's increasing the often and the always, that yes, they're using those four critical questions in their classroom. The second piece of learning, the big idea, is the focus on learning for staff. We all know that the research says the highly qualified staff, the more professional development, the better it is for our students. So, this question was, I understand that professional development is a major component of the professional community learning process. And again, trend data, this is what Mary Ellen was referring to. In 12, 98% of our staff said, yes, we know this. In 13, 98%. And we made a 1% increase. Yes, we know this. That's a critical question to ask. Are you, are you understanding that the more we can support your own professional learning, the higher quality student achievement that we will have? The third slide that I'm sharing here is about the professional development, and we asked some specific questions. If we look at the green, the light green and the darker green, this is always and often, and we'll see that it's all above 50%, 50, 60, 70%. I want to point out a couple of things. When I look at this, this is what I look for, and this is just 14. This is 2014 results. Did the professional development that you received provide support to enhance student learning? Yes. Do we have, 70% said yes. That's great. Then I look at the last one, did it impact the learning of the students? Not quite so much. So, what we need to do next steps is determine what is the difference between those two. Why did we have a higher rating on supported the student learning and a little bit different in impact learning? So, that's a question that we'll be asking this year. Then I looked at, impact my professional practices, which is what we want to have happen as a result of professional development. Supported my professional growth and use professional, use information and strategies and activities. This is where we have to get better at differentiating professional learning, job embedded professional learning, using coaching in our instructional strategies. So, this is an area that we'll be looking at this year to really target, what is it that each teacher needs to improve their practice? We are getting more and more away from one person standing in front of a whole crowd. We are moving away from that to more differentiated PD, and we'll be able to really make strides in that with our new teacher leadership opportunities. So, those are some three big questions that we looked at, and the kinds of things I thought about as I looked at those. Really asking the questions, are the students, are the teachers, what is it they need to learn, know, be able to do, and how do we know? That's the purpose for the survey. How do we know that they're learning? The next couple of slides are about alignment. It's really important that we don't have separate pockets of things that we're doing, but they're aligned, as Mary Ellen alluded to. So, one of the big initiatives that we have is to align our work with the Iowa Core, Curriculum Assessment and Instruction. And this slide is simply to show that these things do line up with our professional learning community questions. If we're asking, what does every student need to learn, know, and be able to do, that is curriculum. If we're asking, what evidence do we have of the learning, that's different kinds of assessment. If we're asking, what are we going to do about the information that we receive, that has to do with the kind of instruction that we have. So, they are not two separate things. They really are aligned. The next picture is the same. Characteristics of Effective Instruction, which you will hear more and more about, comes from the Iowa Core. The first box, it's often called the START, the START diagram, because it's S, student-centered classrooms, T, teaching for understanding, A, assessment for learning, R, rigorous and relevant curriculum, and T, teaching for learner differences. START. Those are characteristics of effective instruction. That's what we're basing our quality of instruction goal on and our school improvement plans on this year. And again, do they line up with the PLC questions? Absolutely. You could draw a line matching the two across. What do we want every student to learn, know, and be able to do? That's our rigorous and relevant curriculum. How will we know if they've learned? That's differentiated instruction. That's assessment for learning. How do we respond if they struggle or don't learn? And how do we respond if they've already learned? Certainly has to do with teaching for understanding, learner-centered classrooms, and learner differences. So, again, all of this is aligned, just digging deeper into the craft of curriculum assessment and instruction. So, how do we know? How do we know how our teachers are doing? Again, I just put this slide in to remind you of the four questions, but I think I've done that enough. Okay? How do we know? My, this is 2014. My knowledge of the Iowa Core standards has, this year, has it increased? It's increased or stayed the same? Huge, a huge shift. This is a celebration. This has been the focus of the district in-service professional learning, district professional learning communities, Carla's work with instructional services. This is an awesome outcome. This is exactly what we wanted to do. So, where do we go from here? So, question number one, yep, we have our priority standards. We understand that. We're going to continue that work. Carla's going to broaden that work in other content areas. So, the second question, question two, about learning and evidence, how do we know, again, from the staff, in order to support your work in this area, please respond. Now, I want to point out a little discrepancy in the results here. Green, dark green is on a regular schedule. Light green is sometimes on early dismissal day, and the first yellow is regularly on an early dismissal day. Actually, we would expect them to do it regularly on an early dismissal day with their PLC team. So, the colors here are a bit misleading, I believe. But if we look at the scale, 44%, 21%, and actually, if we look at 11%, they are looking at the data. They are looking at the data. What we hear oftentimes is, I don't know what to do. Once I've looked at it, I don't know what to do, which again, leads us to our next step. It gives us information. This is great data. It shows progress. What do we need to do next? Question two. Also, question two on formative assessments. The formative assessment I create for my classroom is aligned to the scaffolded skills. This was a question that we're really interested, since we really targeted priority standards and are just beginning to explain a deeper understanding and thinking of scaffolded skills, we would not expect this to be 66%. This is actually pretty good, considering we've just started this work in the last year and a half. So, we're very pleased at the 66%. Glad to see that 25% are doing this. Sometimes, it's okay. Well, actually, this is a celebration, and yet, a next step for us. How do we really align those formative assessments? Lots of times, our assessments were created on the end result, as opposed to what learning was happening at the time. We need to know how students are doing with the learning that's happening at the time in order to answer questions three and four, rather than that end result. This is what I'm teaching you today. How are you doing on today's information? This is what I'm teaching you today. How are you doing on the end result? That's what we want to get away from. So, this, again, is good, positive, and shows us areas for improvement. The participants were given several sections in the survey to create responses, and we wanted to share this one with you to question two, open-ended responses. Participants reported that, what do you need? What do you need to have to get better at formative assessments? Time. They need time together. They need time to review and compare the results, and they need time to collaborate to decide what to do next. They need time together, away from their classrooms, with their PLC teams, to decide what to do. The second question, they came up with, they would like more training on formative assessments. That was not a prompt from us. That came strictly from a trend in the results. Again, I think it's moving from that formative assessment that had too many things in it, to really, what is the learning that I'm working on this week, as opposed to the next two weeks, really refining that formative assessment process. Questions three and four. What do we do if students struggle or don't learn, and what do we do if they've already learned? Again, we're using the characteristics of effective instruction, although we want that to happen in core instruction. We also must be prepared to provide resources for that in our, in our extra periods, in our intervention periods, in our enrichment periods. We really need to know the characteristics so that we can plan for that. So, that happens in two places, in core instruction and in answering questions three and four. How can I tailor my classroom and in my intervention enrichment period to provide all those things on that START poster to help kids be as successful as they possibly can be? And another slide for three and four in is, how do, does my school have a system of tiered support? I believe the question, I'll just read it. My school has a tiered system of support for students who struggle that is timely, directive, and systematic. Research says that those three characteristics are essential to an intervention or enrichment process. And again, you'll see 63% said yes. This is, again, one of those celebrations because we have 63%. Next year, we will have every school in the district that is providing time for intervention and enrichment outside of the class, additional time. That, this graph, next year, will look much different. Again, it won't be perfect in every school. It's a learning process for staff, as it is in a systematic way. It must be systematic. Takes time to get that worked out, but we're really looking forward to how that looks in every school. You will do it the way that you arrange it in your school is up to you. That's that tight and loose piece. Mary Ellen, I see you grabbing the microphone. Oh, no, you're just passing it along. Okay, getting ready for the next question. So, that's how we, I just, we picked a few of those questions to show you what we think about when we look at the survey data, how it fits into the plans that we have, how we use it to evaluate where we've been, where we're going. And the next slide is our next steps. So, for PLCs. So for PLC question number one, what do we want all students to learn, know, and be able to do? Carla's going to respond here in a minute about curriculum alignment and continuing the priority standard process. Because it takes a team. It takes all of us working together. PLC question number two, SIP alignment and characteristics of effective instruction. I think Trace is going to talk a bit about how that works with our school improvement planning. And questions three or four, our intervention and enrichment and how that's going to happen at every school. I believe Mary Ellen's going to talk about that briefly. So Carla, will you start us off, please?
I will. We began, we've implemented the Iowa Core, but last year, what we began with that is to ensure we were hitting all of those standards. There's a lot of standards in there. We began to prioritize them by courses. And so that work has begun. Not only did we assign certain standards to courses, we identified those priority ones as well as supporting and, we call them supporting standards. So this is our major focus, but we're also addressing this standard, this standard, and this standard. That work will continue, and we're going to expand that to other courses, expand it to art, expand it to other areas as we begin this year. We'll use our PLCs to do a lot of that work. We pulled, teachers came in over the summer as well to further that work. We did a lot of that at the middle school level, and I think I've mentioned that here before, with the new courses, the literacy courses that we're teaching. We assigned those standards. We scaffolded them back, which basically means breaking them down so that we can really narrow and identify the skills we want kids to know and be able to do. And then during that work, we started to begin, what are some formative assessments we can use? If we're teaching this standard and encompasses these additional standards with it, what are some formative assessments that teachers can use? And tried to provide that resource to them, as well as what are some instructional strategies that align really well with that.
And as it relates to the school improvement plan, we've made some major revisions this past year to the school improvement plan to better align it to the characteristics of effective instruction and to the PLC work. So the building leadership teams are developing their school improvement plans, identifying a particular characteristic of effective instruction that the staff wants to work on, and setting a couple of goals and trying to stay very focused on that kind of work. So that's helping us align all of that work as well.
And the last part was questions three and four, talking about intervention and enrichment. Becky alluded to this a little bit before. Our elementary schools had blocks of time for at least the past five years, perhaps six years, at each of the elementary schools. It becomes a little bit more difficult to implement with the schedules at the secondary level. And last year, we had some of our middle schools and one of our high schools that had a specific intervention time. But this year, with the change in the schedules at the middle school, all middle schools will have that intervention time built in. And then at the high schools, we will have, all of our high schools have built that into their schedules as well for this year. It'll be Smart Lunch, Warrior Time, or Extended Learning. So they have built that in. And again, we're going to be really focused on how we are making sure that we're focused on the right skills with students during that time. That's going to be the main thing that we're working on. And as I listened to Trace talk about the school improvement planning and even talking about the intervention enrichment, we are so fortunate to have the teacher leadership funds to support the work that we're going to be doing in the next year. We feel like we've just increased our workforce by about 125%. And the message from the central office, we feel like we have, or the direction of those broad goals that you have as a board for the district, we feel like we have a lot of messengers now. It's been multiplied, and we feel like it's going to really have a positive impact. And at this point in time, we just welcome any questions or conversation around the professional learning communities' implementation and the work that we're doing and our next steps.
I do have one more thing I want to say before we entertain questions, and that is, this provides multiple entry points for our staff. Staff needs to choose where it is that they need to improve their skills. It's not that that's going to come from anyone, from their PLC team, their collaboration, and this provides, the slide that had the next steps, that provides the staff opportunities in any of those areas as an entry point. We wouldn't ask a staff member to do all of that at the same time. Where are you? What do you need? How can we support you? And how can we support you through the IDS process also?
Very good. Thank you. Questions or comments? Keith?
I have a comment. I totally support what you're doing. I think it's great for our students. But, and this is a big but, the Iowa Core and the test that we take through the final test, you said in an early meeting, does not align. So expect our scores to go down. What do we do as a school board and a community to make the changes so that all this work doesn't create more schools that are feeling and show that we're not making the progress we should be making? When I feel our students are really, we're really doing the right things. Unless we can change that, when somebody gets out that, you know, 30-yard test of our school district, we're not going to look good. We're going to look like we're a district of failures. And we got to do something about that. We cannot just ignore that.
I agree. Yeah, there is an assessment task force at the state level that is looking at a variety of assessments and will render a recommendation, I believe, last I heard, early January of 2015, to possibly change our state test. But until that happens, you know, we are, our high stakes test is Iowa assessments, and we will really, we are continued to, I think, I believe if we focus on a rigorous curriculum, quality instruction, like those broad goals, if we really focus on those things, and I know we still abide by the, by that high stakes, by the, yes, by no child left behind. We abide by all of that. However, if we're focusing on really providing quality instruction at a rigorous level to our students, I think they will be able to perform even if the test isn't as aligned as we want it to be. So I think we can continue to make improvements in that area.
Okay. Other comments? Gary?
Keith, I thank you for bringing it up. I think I brought that up at the last board meeting about, and asking that maybe our C-Sep committee look at, how do we show success or ways of improvement? And maybe it is with the formative assessments. Maybe it's publicizing or showing how we're doing with, although the idea is improvement of instruction, we as a district use it also to show that we're focusing on and we're showing progress as we progress through our course development. I don't know if that works or not, but, you know, to me, it's a way of showing or not showing that we're successful in what we're doing. And the question I have was, we saw from participants, they want more time to create these formative assessments. Any thoughts on how do we provide? Or how do we build? And how can we move to provide more assessment formulation time?
I think our schools have been pretty creative in doing that. Sometimes they'll do that during their prep time, if indeed they have common prep time with a colleague. I know it is built into Smart Lunch. It's built into the interventions at one of our high schools for next year. I know that sometime, another high school takes an afternoon, takes time with an early dismissal to do that. So I think that the schools are pretty creative about that. I know at the middle school level, they're going to use that time in the mornings before school. So there are ways to do that. And if you go to the PLC Institute, the de forest will often say, you don't need to add on time or have teachers out of classroom for this time. You need to build it into your existing schedule. And I think that they've done a very wonderful job, our teachers and our administrators, with that out at the buildings. Is there enough time? No. I would be the first to say that. So maybe the second.
So this really gets at the heart of what we are as a board. What we're all about is student achievement. I mean, that's our primary purpose and why we're volunteering to be on the board. I'm just curious, is there anything else in your minds that we need to be focused on as a board? We've given you our goals based on what we've learned in professional development as a board and from the superintendent and others. But, I mean, Tanya, you as well, from the teacher's perspective, are there things that aren't here that we need to really focus on? And you don't have to answer it necessarily right this moment. I mean, if you have comments, that's great. But I would really appreciate, and I think as a board, the more we can hear about, are there gaps that we need to focus on to support this student achievement, the better. So.
Yep. Agreed. Any other comments? Ellen?
This report was very helpful. I know it's going to change because we're looking at changing how we do our PLCs, right? We're looking to change that to, rather than Wednesday half-days to full-days, right? Next year and this year, whatever. So that's going to change a little bit. But the thing that baffled me about this, and this is more of a challenge, is there are, how many teachers do we have? Like 1,300 teachers? And then we've got these other ones that are called teacher associates or PARAs. There's like 500 of those or something like that. And when I see the numbers, and I know that statistically, these are great numbers as far as the number of participants, but it seems like we're missing 600 to, we're missing over half the people. And I don't know the answer to that. Like, are there people who just don't believe in the PLC, so they're not going to answer the survey? Or is it just a matter of, people don't feel like it's important because to get a clearer picture of what's really going on? And I know you've done a great job with the leadership in the buildings. Since I've been on the board, there's been a lot of changes. So I appreciate that. But I just don't know, if you could answer the question, is where's the other half of the participants, if you will, as far as surveys go?
We didn't survey the par professionals. We only administered the survey to the teachers. So we had about 60% complete the survey, a little bit over that perhaps. You know, it was, we administer that in May every year. I don't know, that's a very busy time with the end of the year. But I don't think that there is any movement of resistance. You said, do they don't believe in this? I don't think that's the case. And based on some of the questions that we didn't show you the results for, when it says there's 98% that understand what it is and are implementing and using the framework. So I don't think that. I think it's, I think it could be time of year. Maybe we need to administer it at a different time of year. It could be that it wasn't promoted a whole lot.
I was telling Dr. Benson and company that we could get a lot more participation. You know, there's 600 people missing, and if you could get them participating, it creates buy-in. And not to say that there is or isn't, but it just seems like when you see that many people missing, there's something odd about that. And I think it would help the board.
Our response rate has stayed pretty steady through three years. So it's not that any particular year, it's gone up or down. It's stayed pretty steady.
We'll discuss it, see what we can do.
Is this an online survey? How do they do?
Yes, it's K-12.
At Insight. We use K-12 at Insight. Anne?
Just back to the first part of Ellen's comments, I'm not aware that we've actually decided what professional development looks like in the future. And I know you mentioned it's changing, but I don't know that we've actually had a discussion or presentation on that. So I just wanted to maybe clarify that or ask the question. Is that correct? We haven't actually decided something yet, correct?
No, that's correct. And we will be having that discussion this fall as we unfold the discussion for the 15-16 calendar.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Great report. I think you're a model in the state of Iowa as far as professional learning communities. We've been cited by the Department of Education, and getting the teacher leadership money is, demonstrates how, what high-quality work that you do. So we really appreciate the work and time that you've put into it. Thank you very much. For everybody in our listening community, if you can vote before September 9, that would be great and support PEPAL. Hope you have a great day tomorrow. I hope it's flawless and everything goes well for everyone. Thank you for your attendance at our meeting tonight, and we stand adjourned.